Agenda.
Well, I'll be back.
Hi, I just want to let you know that we are on YouTube now, so we're online.
Okie dokie.
Is Noah Brownlow there?
Yes.
Are you going to be presenting or are you just doing public comment?
Public comment.
Okay, thank you.
I have six o'clock mayor.
Okay, Happy New Year everyone and welcome to the open session to hear public comment before closed session. Call roll please.
Vice Mayor Bates.
President.
Councilmember Choi.
President.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez. Absent. Councilmember Myrick.
Here.
Councilmember Willis. Just absent and Mayor Butt.
Here.
Okay, announcement for the public, if you would like to make a public comment on any of the following items, the council will discuss in closed session, please raise your hand now. And to comment by video, click on the participants button at the bottom of your screen and select the raise hand button. To comment by phone, press the star key and the number nine. After the items have been read into the record, the request to speak period will be closed. During closed session, the council will discuss the following items. Conference with labor negotiators, agency representative, Mayor Tom Butt, unrepresented employee, city manager, public employee performance evaluation title, city manager. And I do not see any request to speak, but I do have a comment that we received prior to one o'clock. Communist from Cordell Handler, Laura has brought a great deal of knowledge when it comes to dealing with housing and economic development, and Laura is respected by not only her staff, but the department heads are lucky to have her on board. That concludes the comments.
Thank you, we are adjourned to closed session.
Eduardo, they went to the closed session.
I'll go there.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Bates.
President.
Councilmember Choi. Councilmember Johnson.
President.
Councilmember Martinez. Absent Councilmember Myrick.
Present.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
And Mayor Butt.
Here.
Let me check back with Councilmember Choi. And Councilmember Martinez. Okay, both absent for roll call. Councilmember Choi.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, statement of conflict of interest. Are there any? Hearing none under agenda review. I do not have any request to remove any items from the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So, um, the three items on the consent calendar, or the entirety of the consent calendar, I think I was sort of thrown off guard by because I thought we were really just dealing with something else tonight. But, um, uh, the three appointment items, I did speak with the city manager about the other two items, so I think it's fine to leave those. I think the three appointment items I would like to request be continued to the next council meeting, um, for the next council to deal with. Um, and I don't know if you want to do that, or I can make a motion to do that.
Um, I would, I would rather not do it. Um, you know, these positions have been vacant for a long time and, um, uh, I only have one applicant for each of them, and I'd just like to fill them and move on, so.
Okay, I mean, I, I haven't had a chance to go through, through them. I don't think that's what the council is planning to do tonight. So I'll make a motion that we continue items G1, G2, and G3 to the next council meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Madam Clark.
Vice Mayor Bates.
No.
Councilmember Choi.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Myrick.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
And Mayor Butt.
No.
The motion passes with council, with Vice Mayor Bates and Mayor Butt voting no.
Okay.
So they will be continued, those item G1 through G3 will be continued until January 19th. Okay, um, I would just like to read an announcement for the public. Anyone may make an oral comment, even if a written comment has previously been submitted. However, each speaker may only raise their hand once to make one oral public comment per agenda item. As we move through the agenda, I will announce the next item number and ask individuals who would like to address the council to raise their hand. After the item is read into the record, the request to speak period of the item, on the item will be closed. A public comment, open forum will be held shortly, so individuals who would like to speak under open forum should raise your hand now. And to comment by video, click on the participants button at the bottom of your screen and select the raise hand button. And to comment by phone, press the star key and the nine, number nine key. Next on the agenda is a report from our city attorney of final decisions made during closed session.
Good evening. There are no final decisions made in closed session to report this evening.
Next item is a report from our city manager.
Good evening and happy new year to everybody. I am looking forward of, uh, good things to come this year. I wanted to update you on two things, um, and then actually ask, uh, for the third set of information from someone else. The first two things are that we have, um, already begun our virtual after-school camps for our youth. Uh, so our achieve and elevate programs are actually underway as of yesterday. You can still register. Uh, so please go ahead and visit. These include things like homework help and arts and crafts and games and all those kinds of things that we're learning to do virtually. So, um, if you've got, uh, K through eighth graders, I'm sorry, K through sixth graders, um, please go ahead and take a look at that. They'll be running through June the ninth. Uh, the second item is that it is, uh, ECIA grant season here in Richmond. We are offering our ECIA grants again, these are the ones that we've, um, previously done over the past number of years. These are up to $50,000 per grant, uh, for community youth and youth sports activities. The applications are going to be due February 5th, but most importantly, um, on January the 14th, there's actually going to be a, um, information session that we really recommend people attend because we have changed some of the parameters and some of the requirements. So there are changes. We'd recommend you attend on the 14th. Uh, that happens at 6:00 PM, uh, via Zoom, so visit our website for more information. Uh, and then I would like to ask our city clerk to share information about what's coming up, uh, to the council next week.
Okay, so next week will be our swearing in ceremony via Zoom for our re-elected and newly elected council members. Melvin Willis for District One, Gail McLaughlin, District Five, and Claudia Jimenez, District Six. Um, the program will be coming out and published, just like we publish our agendas on Wednesday. So please look out for that. And let's see, each individual council member, I'll swear them in individually, not as a group. Because I think it, uh, the, the sound will be muffled if you try to speak together. So that is the update for now. So just be on the lookout for our beautiful program. That's it.
Thank you. And that concludes my report here.
Hey. So next on the agenda is open forum. And it looks like we have three speakers. Each speaker shall be allowed up to two minutes. Tarnell Abbott, Jean Quartz, and Noah Brownlow. Just where, please call the speakers.
Okay, I have Tarnell Abbott. Tarnell, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Good evening. Um, I, I guess I'm still, uh, really angry at, uh, some of our council members who voted for the, uh, development agreement on our toxic waste site, which is actually owned by AstraZeneca. And, um, you know, you guys, you never addressed the old, the old, the old environmental report was out of date. And there are so many dangerous impacts there. And you just are justifying your, uh, policies by, um, proceeding in this old way. And it's just not healthy for human beings to live out there. It's not healthy for all the animals, all, all the birds, all the creatures to allow that stuff to be out there. Of course, you could have it cleaned up. You just, you know, sold out for, you know, a small amount of money, really, in the long run. You could have had a real cleanup out there, and instead you, you, you got, uh, bought off by, uh, you know, some really shady characters. And you should be ashamed of yourselves. I'm very proud of Eduardo Martinez and Melvin Willis, who had the guts to stand up and say no to this lousy deal. The other thing that you've done by doing this, you've put the, um, you've put the homeowners, future homeowners are going to be on the hook for maintaining the fans and other, uh, mitigation systems that are installed there. You know, that shouldn't be on the individual homeowners. That's ridiculous. You're also going to have the city of Richmond responsible for the, in, the maintaining the engineering. And, uh, you know, they're not qualified to, to, uh, look at that stuff, to monitor for VOCs and whatnot. I mean, this is really, this is a lousy deal. And, uh, you know, you should, you should really, uh, think about your own future. You know, you don't care about anybody else. Think of your own political future. It's ridiculous what you've done. I'm ashamed of you.
Thank you, Tarnell. The next speaker is Jean Quartz. Jean, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Jeanie Quartz, Richmond resident. I want to take this opportunity to thank Eduardo Martinez and Melvin Willis for the support of the Richmond community regarding their opposition to the developments at Point Malati and AstraZeneca. I am dumbfounded that those of you that voted for these two developments are okay with selling our public land to build housing just over the ridge from the Chevron refinery to a less than reputable Southern California developer, Sun Cal. And then you are also okay with building homes on a California-supervised toxic superfund site with a less than residential standard cleanup, again, to a, a disreputable developer shopoff. Both of these developments pose great financial risks to the city. You voted against the will of the people of Richmond. You would not listen to the community, nor the experts, and listen only to the developers' so-called experts. You received a majority of emails and comments that were against both projects. The small support you received was from trades unions and other special interests. You never addressed recommendations to build affordable housing in the core of the city that already has infrastructure in place, is near public transportation, would big jobs and businesses to the downtown area, and would greatly improve the reputation and look of the city. You're definitely stuck in the old 1980s planning. This last election proves that people are angry with you. The new incoming city council members will work for and with the community, not just for the developers and the special interests. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the last speaker is Noah Brownlow. Noah, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start. Noah?
Hello, good evening, council members and city staff, members of the public. My name is Noah Brownlow. I'm a battalion chief with the fire department. I wanted to call in tonight to publicly recognize the efforts of, uh, some of our employees and some of the, uh, community members and local businesses with the annual Richmond Police and Fire Toy Drive. We had some specific challenges this year due to the pandemic, and everybody really stepped up. Residents donated toys in huge amounts. Richmond Rotary raised money to purchase bikes. Firefighters built bikes, and Rich City Rides, a local businesses, a local business helped distribute the bikes in special giveaway events so that children could have, local children could have the holiday that they, they deserved. Two employees in particular, Captain, Fire Captain Rico Rincon and firefighter Marcus Famui contributed significantly to this effort. They took time away from their families and their own children to come in on their off days and volunteer their time to help collect activities, or collect toys and coordinate activities from around the city. I felt like their efforts are a really good example of, um, the best traditions of public service, and I wanted to publicly recognize them for the excellent work they're doing in the community, both on and off the job. Thank you, Rico, and thank you, Marcus.
Thank you. And that was the last speaker.
Okay, our next item, um, we did, we need a motion to approve the consent calendar. And just to remind everyone, items G1, G2, and G3 were continued to January 19th.
Remorse. I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Motion.
Second.
Second by.
Myrick. Councilmember Myrick.
Mm-hmm. Sorry, okay. Uh, okay, uh, call and roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bates.
Yes.
Councilmember Choi.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Myrick.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
And Mayor Butt.
Yes.
The vote is unanimous. Our next item is item H1.
You can, you can share your screen.
Okay. Sorry, is that?
Yeah, we can see it.
Can you see the presentation?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Got it. So here we go, let me start with the basic terms. The contract is for three periods, three years, starts today, should you approve it, and would end Jan. 31st, 2024. It requires a six-month expiration. And if not, the new term of two years commences. The base salary is $255 annually with a total comp of $366 and I'll go with that in detail in a minute. Here's some changes to the compensation. First, it provides for a bank of two weeks of vacation, which is identical to the city, city attorney. Number two, it eliminates the $100 per month telephone allowance. Number three, the vehicle allowance is the same, but it adjusts based on the CPI. And finally, and most importantly, the major change is that the city contribution is not going to be made on behalf of the city manager through the deferred comp account. It's also going to be adjusted based on the IRC 457B prevailing rate, which currently is at $26,000 at the max level. It adjusts periodically. Here's some other changes to the compensation. First is that the vacation administrative accrual rates are being increased to the city's max. For vacation, that means it's going to be at 30 days per year. For the administrative leave, it's going to be 11 days for fiscal year. And for the floating holidays, it's going to be five days and two hours per calendar year. Another major change is that the vacation accrual cap is set for three years. Basically, the new contract calls to for having the city manager's benefits be similar to, if not greater than, the executive management employees. For the termination clause, this contract is broader than the existing or the current city manager's contract. There are four major changes. First is that the governing body, the, the governing body elects to terminate the city manager in the property and duly authorized public meeting, which is common practice. Second is that the, if the roles and duties of the city manager are changed, and, and part of that is the, if the government, form of government is changed. Third, if there's a reduction in the base salary, or the compensation that is greater than the average reduction for all department heads. And finally, if the city manager resigns following an offer to accept a resignation, whether formal or informal, by representative of the majority of the governing body. The separation clause has been revised as well. It now provides for nine months of severance, as opposed to the current contract, which has six months. The other changes in the contract, the three most important ones are that the current agreement provides for less detailed performance evaluation provision than the proposed agreement. Second, the current agreement requires written consent for simultaneous employment, whereas the current, where the proposed agreement does not. And finally, the current agreement has an attorney's fee shifting provision, whereas the proposed agreement does not. At the mayor's request, I provided some comparative salary and compensation data in the staff report. And here are the main points. First is that the median salary for the county was $251,000 and the average was $252,000. Based on this contract, as you know, as I mentioned earlier, the city manager would receive $255,000. And that's fixed for all three years. Second point, the city's highest base salary in the county was Pleasant Hill at $285 and the lowest is Pinole at $231. Fairfield City Manager's base salary is $265,200. It should be noted that seven cities out of the 16 in the county contribute toward deferred comp and eight cities provide nine months of more, or more severance. And nine, and the rest provide six months, nine months or less. Here's a breakdown of the total comp. Base salary, $255, car allowance, $6,000. Deferred comp, $26,000. Standard health package, $11,000. Alpers, that is a city's contribution, $57,000. OPEB, $10,000, which brings the total to $366,552. I hope you can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, are there any questions from council members?
I had one question, Mr. Mayor.
All right, go ahead.
Is the life insurance costs included in those benefits? And does she, does the city manager have a life insurance policy with the city?
Yes. Yes, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, Vice Mayor Bates. Yes, she does and it wouldn't change, there was no change in that, that would be $250,000, $250,000. And that doesn't change.
Well, where's that cost coming from?
That's part of the standard package, there are many other items that are not listed in the, in the staff report, but that, that item hadn't changed.
Okay.
Are there other questions from council members?
One, one quick one?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, there was a piece that I don't remember us discussing in a closed session about simultaneous employment, what does that mean?
It essentially means that the city, the city manager, I'll let Rachel jump in as well, that the city manager chooses to say teach at another institution. That could be a simultaneous.
I mean, what if she's city manager, if you got like a, aside. So I, I don't remember discussing that change in closed session, so I'm wondering why that change was included.
That was in the ICMA standard. You might want to talk more about that standard.
Yeah, it's a standard part of the contract for the ICMA template.
I see. Okay, I mean, I, I, I guess I'll just, you know, when we agreed to sort of that change, it was, it was seen as those changes would be mostly things that are not, you know, we, we were thinking those would be innocuous type changes. I don't know, I feel strongly about that, but I, I was a little shocked to see that type of change.
Are there other questions? Okay, do we have any public speakers, Madam Clerk?
We do not have any public speakers.
Okay, if there are no further questions, I would.
Actually, I, I do have one quick question. When was a copy of that IC, whatever it is, sent out to us?
I'll let Rachel answer that question, I wasn't.
I know, it was just.
You're breaking up, Rachel.
Couldn't tell whether it was me or her.
Sorry. It, it was provided to the council last week.
On, on what day? I'm sorry, I, I guess I, I'll have to check my emails, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I would entertain a motion.
One, one quick question, if there was any changes, we, we should, we have to approve this as is, no, with no changes, is that the place that we're at right now?
Um, no, the, I think if the council explains what, you know, a change to be made to it, that, that can be done via a motion.
Okay, I mean, the, that one piece that I brought up earlier, I don't know how my colleagues feel about that. I, I, I don't think we discussed that in closed session. I don't think we were aware that that would be one of those ICM, one of those types of changes. So I don't know if my colleagues feel strongly about that, but to me, it seemed kind of strange that we would have a policy where a city manager, a job this important, for a city as big as this, as, as big as Richmond, could just get a side gig without telling the council? You know, I don't know if I want to go as far as to put that in the motion, but before I make a motion, I wanted to check with my colleagues and see if they have feelings about that.
I, I agree with, with Councilmember Myrick. I, I think that when we agreed to the, using the template, we were under the assumption that everything was basically the same, only stated with different language.
Right. So I guess I'll, so if, if my colleagues seem to agree, I guess I'll make a motion.
I have one question before you, before you do, J L. Through the chair, I guess my question would be, what did Laura's predecessors have? Did they have this stipulation in, in their contracts or not? That's my only question.
Okay, can you answer that?
Anil, do you know?
I do not know.
Um, I, I believe, but I'm not entirely certain. You know, I, I just don't, I don't want to, I'm not sure.
Do you, Rachel, do you want me to address that?
Sure.
Yeah, I, it is, it is highly likely that that specific language was not in the, the, the language as proposed in your packet, it's highly likely that that was not in prior city manager contracts.
That's what I would think as well, but wasn't entirely sure.
Right. Okay, we've got kind of a double negative going here. So, so what, 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 what we're saying is that previously, I mean, I mean.
It was either, it would have been either silent or specified that, that council has to approve it.
Has to approve, I think.
And that's.
Okay, but those are pretty, being silent and, and saying council has to approve it are two
Right.
very different things, so.
Michael, are you on and do you have anything to add to that? I'm not sure if he's. I believe it required council approval.
Okay. I mean, I think it would must, I mean, because this is the change that was requested as, you know, this, this different template was separate from the template we had previously been using.
Just for clarification, council member, are you suggesting that you want to change it to require council approval?
I wanted to change to whatever it said before. So if it required council approval before, then I'm fine with it. If it was silent before, I'm fine with that, but it seems, it seems a little strange to me that we would, we would add in a, a provision that the city manager for such a big city could just take a side gig and not tell us. No offense, Laura, I don't know if that's up your plan.
Why don't you, why, why don't you put that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I'll do that. So I'll, I'll go ahead and move the entirety of the contract changes with the exception of, and say that with the one exception would be that the language on simultaneously, or simultaneous work would revert to the previous language.
There wasn't any previous language.
Whatever was there, whether it wasn't there or whether, what, we don't, I, I think we don't know what the previous language was. And so whatever the previous language was on simultaneous employment is what would.
I, I think.
Could we just ask for, could we just ask that, say it would require council approval?
We can do that too.
That would be cleaner.
Okay, so.
Your motion, council remark?
Yeah, that's fine, so okay, so I'll make the motion and then instead, the, the one exception would be that simultaneous employment would require council approval.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Martinez. Call roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Bates?
Yes.
Councilmember Choi?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Myrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yeah.
And Mayor Butt?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay, you want to call the last item on our agenda?
The last item is reports of officers referrals to staff and general reports, including AB 1234 reports.
Anybody have a report?
Mr. Mayor, I have an adjournment if we, when we get there.
Okay, anybody have a report? I think we're ready for adjourned items. Go ahead, council remark.
So thank you, this one actually hits really close to home for me, but I know it's impacting a lot of people in the community as well. Marissa Snotty, who has been, some, some of you may know from her work with the Rye Center. She was clinical director there and, and helped provide a lot of services to our, our youth in Richmond. Passed away this Sunday. People may not know, she's also was in a long-term serious relationship with my brother, Kim. And so this was a major loss for my family. I know many of you have siblings, you know, sometimes with your siblings sort of relationships, you can get protective if there was somebody that's not right for them, if there's somebody that is right for them. You know, you feel content and I've been content over the past few years when it comes to my brother, because I knew we had Marissa and she's, the work she's done in the community has been amazing. But again, just as a member of, you know, my family, really, I've, I've, I've just really admired her. So it's a major hit that a lot of people are feeling in the community, that my family is feeling very uniquely. I know a lot of the youth that work with her, a lot of the people at Rye are feeling. And so, yeah, it's a hard one, so I just wanted to make sure that we close tonight, adjourned in memory of Marissa Snotty.
All right, thank you, and I'm sorry for your loss, J L. Any others? Okay, I think we've come to the end of our agenda. If there are no other items, we stand adjourned. Happy New Year.
7:01. Thank you, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.